It is now six o'clock. I'd like to bring the Select Board meeting to order for an executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21. On August 11, 2025, at 6:00 p.m., we are going to be moving into Room 303 in the Town Hall office. We are going to discuss 970 Tucker Road, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21a 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. We're also going to discuss all unions' collective bargaining, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21a 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the Chair so declares. We will be returning here at approximately 6:30 p.m.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Mr. McDonald, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. All in favor?
Aye.
No? Call Mr. O'Neill.
Yep.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
And I say yes.
I'd like to call the Select Board meeting of August 11th to order. Announcement, we are all here, no need to do a roll call vote. So to start us off, and I apologize for our tardiness, we are going to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I do ask for everyone to stand for a moment of silence. Aye.
Let me just declare, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call to mine our service members, both here and abroad, those that have passed, those that continue to keep us safe. Thank you. Well, luckily, we didn't have any appointments, but before we get our party started, we have acknowledged a couple of people at previous meetings with citations, and due to either my absence, their absence, there was someone that we, as a board, were not able to have with us to tell them how valuable their work has been until tonight. Let me see if she has no clue. Tonight, we'd like to honor with a citation Melanie Perry. Melanie Perry serves the Select Board and our Town Administrator as our Administrative Assistant, and since June of 2024, when Mr. McGinnis left, she has been the absolute glue, holding us and the office together. Now she's wishing she wasn't here tonight. Melanie, in recognition of your outstanding dedication, leadership, and professionalism during a time of transition, you stepped up with the unwavering commitment and integrity, ensuring the continued operation, stability, and progress of town government. Your deep knowledge, calm demeanor, and collaborative spirit have been invaluable assets to the community and a model of public service. And be it further known that the Dartmouth Select Board extends its best wishes, wishes for continued success. Yes, you need to come up. I said I would do this right away so that you could then leave. No, thank you. We really could not have done it without you.
The epitome, the epitome of girlfriend.
No, Melanie, thank you very much for everything. All right, now, we are actually going to get started. So we start this evening with some new business. Seen it being built on the corner of State Road and Fonce Connor Road, we have a common Vic license for Chick-fil-A. Is there someone here from Chick-fil-A?
Oh, yeah.
Come on up to the podium.
You're not going to get off easy.
Chicken coming around here. I got vegetarian chicken.
Saw the sign today.
Yeah, it's almost done.
Right on the corner.
All right, just state your name.
Julie Gallagher.
Julie Gallagher, and you are here tonight to talk to us about your license for Chick-fil-A.
Yes.
Okay. When do you expect that you'll be open?
As of right now, probably end part of September, depending on electricity.
Oh, okay, nothing we can help you with.
You guys have any?
Nothing we can help you with. Very exciting for us, and actually to see the corner, that corner lot being, being used, and welcome to Dartmouth. Does anyone have any questions for Julie?
The electric?
I get a question.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Is it a transformer that you're waiting for?
We just got the transformer last week, but now we need, and we had our landscaping cleared, but now we need it to be hooked up to the transformer, I was told. I think there's a couple steps.
That's the only question I had.
Mr. Mickelson.
So is this a corporate entity? This one, this one here, says private.
Franchise?
It's a franchise, yes, yes.
And where's the franchise out of?
Well, I own the franchise, so I live in Mattapoiset, so not too far.
Have you worked your, have you worked your way up the chain of Chick-fil-A?
No, I, well, I owned the one in Fall River for three years.
Oh, okay.
And then when this became built, I transferred over to Dartmouth. So I was an external operator, so I've never worked for Chick-fil-A prior to running the Fall River location, so, yeah.
Before, I remember seeing you in the store.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I was probably a little bit more frantic at the time.
I was in the chicken business in the 1970s.
Oh, really?
Barbecue chickens and fried.
Oh, really? Here, local?
In Fairhaven, yeah.
Oh, that's awesome. What was the name?
It was called Roseland Farm.
Very cool.
You're kidding? Barbecue chickens.
Oh, that's awesome.
New every day for the rest of us. Didn't realize you had done that.
Where's Roseland today?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. McDonald, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Mickelson, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, hope to see you guys there.
All right, next.
Yes, you can, you can go, you can go.
Yeah.
I can see her, I can see her pointing, so.
Next, we have an inholders license renewal for residents in. You'll note the date. We had one a bit ago which had gotten lost in the system, as did this one.
Great, okay.
Everything is fine and up to date.
This is just a renewal, this is not new.
Right, this was a renewal that should have happened some months ago.
Which actually should have happened several months ago.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I make a motion to, to approve.
Mr. McDonald made the motion, Mr. Mickelson for the second, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. All right, next, we have the Zoning Board of Appeals alternate appointment. So Robert Gardner has been serving on the Zoning Board of Appeals for a number of years, but due to some health challenges and stuff, he would like to step down as a regular member and be named as an alternate appointment. That being said, ironically, several months ago, when we were making ZBA appointments, we didn't, we did not, on our paperwork, define that someone was an alternate, and we actually appointed them to the board. So accepting Robert Gardner as an alternate will keep the board with three current members.
So that would be, there'll be Chuba Maderas and Alvin Human.
Uline.
And that's who you had appointed technically as a sitting member.
We didn't realize to appoint him as an alternate.
Make a motion then, we, we, we take Robert Gardner from the, as a voting member, and give him as a alternate member to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Who's the third? We have a motion made by Mr. McDonald, seconded by?
Me.
Mr. Mickelson, all in favor of appointing Robert Gardner as an alternate member to the zoning board? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Go to the very end.
Question?
Yes.
Do we have a, a third voting member?
Yes.
The, the voting members will now be Alvin Human, Halim Chuba, and Michael Maderas.
Thank you.
The alternates will consist of Robert Gardner, Dr. Agai, and Walter Paria.
Got you. Thank you.
All right, now we have Pathways Committee appointment. We have both the Interested Parties letter, and we also have the letter in support by the head of the Pathways Committee. Is James Boggs in the audience? Yes, he is, come on up to the podium. Thought that might be you.
Michael.
Hello, James Boggs, welcome to Dartmouth. I understand you're a new resident.
Yes.
Well, new how many years or how many months?
This would be my third year.
All right, so still a new member of Dartmouth, and thank you. Avid bicyclist, I guess.
Yes, yes, I spent, I spent 40 years in Boston, and kind of, you know, grew up along with the, with the bike lanes, and then my wife died about 20 years ago, and, you know, found myself really strapped for money, so I sold all the cars, and I used bicycle as my primary means, and my son as a primary means of transportation. So, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty, pretty much into it. Went to Holland to see how it works over there, you know?
That's dangerous over there. You got to watch where you're going.
You, you don't want to walk in the bike paths.
No.
But, but, yeah, I moved here, and then I, I had, I had a disease, I had some cancer, and they had to take it out, so I lost a couple of years, so this is, I'm starting to get active again, and I, I was in a meeting, and they were talking about the, you know, the South Coast Bike Way, and, you know, I've been following this US Bike One for quite a few years, so to me, it's the Erie Canal, you know? It's, it's like, you know, a whole revolutionary new way of, of doing things, so I'm really, really into it, so.
Thank you.
I'd like to help out if I can. I'm retired, so it gives me some purpose and focus, you know, so.
Well, thank you. We've done quite an investment, there's going to be quite a, a new area from across Dartmouth for the pathways and, and cycling, and I'm sure Bill Trimble will keep you moving in that direction.
Yep. Yep, he's got me working for free on Saturdays now.
Yeah, that sounds like a, yeah.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, yeah. We, we built a bike the other day over in New Bedford and, I don't know, she was, you give them away. We build them and give them away. And this little girl came in, she's about, I don't know, four or five. And you thought you're giving her a Benz, you know?
Yeah.
Wow, my own bike, you know?
It is very exciting, yeah.
And Bill looked at me and I thought I'd work for free forever, you know, for that.
Yeah. Paid it by smiles. Well, I, I thank you for coming. So motion to approve by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. McDonald, all in favor? Aye.
Anything I can do for you, let me know. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Never done any of this stuff before, so do I leave now? Is that the idea?
Yes.
You don't have to stick around.
You do not have to stay till the end of the meeting. By the end of the meeting, we will be alone.
Once you get your letter of appointment, you go to the town clerk's office, get sworn in.
Sworn in, right. I was just saying.
That's it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Boggs. Thank you.
See you on the road.
All right, well, the next item up is exciting for me because, as you know, I've been serving on the DART Committee. And we have hired a Substance Use Program Coordinator. And so tonight, Rachel DeZilo is here to introduce herself, tell you a little bit about herself and what she has already jumped in, so come on up to the microphone, Rachel.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So, yes, I am Rachel DeZilo, your new Substance Use Program Coordinator for the town. I'm very excited to be here and get the opportunity to work with DART. So a little about me, I studied criminal justice with a focus in forensic psychology, and I have my master's in public administration. I've worked for about four and a half years in the addiction field in various settings, including Section 35 and the outpatient treatment setting. I've worked doing, you know, patient-facing, more clinical work. When I've also, and I've also done more of like the boots-on-the-ground work in the community with outreach. So I did start beginning of July, and already I've gotten to meet with the police department, the schools, of course, the DART Committee, and just have learned ways in which I can collaborate with them and kind of meet the town's needs in the areas of addiction, specifically with the opioid settlement funds, and just, you know, meet the town's needs in the space of addiction, so, yeah. Oh, and just while I'm up here, I would like to invite you all and also plug our International Overdose Awareness Day event on August 28th. It's from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM here at the Town Hall. It'll be out front, and it's a great opportunity to connect with our local partners. Lots of great resources, get to know the recovery community here in Dartmouth, and get to hear and share some personal stories from members of the community and their experiences with addiction and overdose. So I'd like to see you all there if possible. But, yeah, that's all I have.
Any questions?
No, I just, congratulations on landing the job. Rachel, I had an opportunity to meet Rachel at the Employee Cookout. And wish you all the luck in the world.
Thank you so much.
I said to her that day, which was kind of rude, but you have to take it in context. I hope she's the next fire that we make, that we don't actually need her position and we hopefully move her into something else, right? But unfortunately...
If we can cure opioid addiction, that's exactly, we'll find her a new job.
Yeah.
Rachel.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. McDonald?
No, I'm good, I'm marking it down now.
Oh, putting it on his calendar.
What time is?
Five to seven on Thursday. August 20. In front of the Town Hall.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Rachel. She has jumped in with both feet, which has totally freed up Dolores to go back to being the youth advocate and myself. So, thank you, Rachel. And you two may leave. Our next, we are going to hear from Judy Lund. We're going to talk about the authorization for tree removal at the Joseph Davis Cemetery. And as Judith is coming up to the microphone, I do want to give Judith a shout-out. And I'm not sure if she watched our meeting a few weeks ago. I had given you a shout-out then because I had taken copies of your books, postcards from Dartmouth, as gifts to our sister city in La Gua.
Oh, wonderful.
And they were thrilled. And upon receiving it, just kind of were panning through it because we take so much of it for granted. And they're, they were looking at it as these postcards, which had pictures of the architecture of our Dartmouth and through the history. And they were really in awe of it. So I've met with the sister cities, and I said, this has got to be a piece of our future presentations to other sister cities. So thank you, Judith, for that, the book, for authoring the book, and for sharing it with us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Now, tonight, you're going to talk to us up at the Joseph Davis Cemetery, and I thank you. In our packet, we actually, you shared photographs of the area. And as you remember, we did vote a sum of money to, which Parks and Rec are going through and cleaning up the cemetery, the actual stones. But this has to do with the overgrowth at the site.
Actually, we went out to bid, and we have hired people who are trained in preservation of cemeteries and cemetery stones. And they have already sprayed the stones with D-2, and the growths on the stones are beginning to disappear. But that cemetery has 200 and some stones, and 69 of them are fallen, broken, in need of repair. And that work will start. The monies that I got were 35, will work out to 35K for restoration, which was the bid that these people made, and $15,000 to repair a wall on the south side that has been undermined by trees. And the whole wall has to be taken down and rebuilt. So tonight, we're talking about the trees that surround that Welcome to Dartmouth stone. Trees grow. They were cute little tiny trees when they were planted. They are now no longer cute little tiny trees. And they're beginning to undermine the wall on the east side. And Parks and Rec say they can take those trees out and protect that wall, but they said they needed the permission of the Select Board in order to do it. And then maybe the Select Board will author flowers, will argue for flowers or architectural grasses or something like that, other than trees that are really destroying the wall of the cemetery. We have hopes this fall, the fellows who are doing it will begin work, they'll get heavy equipment in there. They've already unloaded some stone in the back of the cemetery. And they will have a public day where they will explain what they are doing. And we will hopefully make sure that's well-known around town. I've already told Dartmouth Week that it's going to happen, and so it's on their calendar.
Excellent. Do you have a date for that?
No, not yet.
Not yet, okay. I'm, I'm thinking another thing. I have family stones in another cemetery.
Which cemetery?
Peyton Arum Cemetery.
It's a private cemetery.
Right, so what I'm thinking, fundraising effort is I'd like to buy some of that chemical and take care of the family stones, but perhaps we can, we can do a little fundraising.
Well, it was developed in Westport.
Oh.
Yeah.
I'd buy the gallon.
Oh, really? Oh. All right, thank you.
And there still are more, going to be more cemeteries that could use attention in the town. But this one was a former town cemetery. And there actually are some remains of blacktop walkways in that cemetery. But it's right there next to that stone that says, "Welcome, welcome." And look, we can't take care of our cemetery, is what it amounts to.
It's the wrong message.
And so this was the place to start.
Are they going to take down the, besides the trees that are behind the stone, are they going to take down the, the evergreen bushes, the leaf catches?
The ones that are behind the stone, all of them, yeah.
Yeah. What about the, the evergreen?
Yeah, it's behind the stone.
There are, because I'll be honest with you, they can scrub that whole area out. And then re, you know, we can come up with something to redesign it, so it's a little bit better.
Exactly.
But if they can scrub that whole thing completely out...
That's their plan. Clean it out, so that it won't undermine the wall.
First of all, those, those kind of bushes, they're a pain in the butt to maintain. They catch leaves, they catch garbage, they, it's just a constant maintenance problem. It's just easier just to completely...
Get rid of them, yep.
Completely get rid of them.
That is my desire. If you want to put flowers in there, that's fine, you know?
Yeah, I mean, ornamental grasses and some perennials would take care of it. See you later. That's perfect.
But Parks and Rec says that you have to have your permission in order to take the trees down. They can do it.
Also power wash the stone to make it a little cleaner, too, so.
Mr. McDonald, is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Mickelson. All in favor to give Parks and Rec the permission to oversee this project and make it happen? Say aye.
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 Mr. Brooks?
Yes, Mr. Tattelbaum, sorry.
I think that any conversation I've ever had with Judy, I am biased because I'm an historian, and someday I want to be the kind of historian she is. But I think maybe we could go to contact the DCTV when they make that presentation, send them out there, and you could talk about the whole project, and people could make it a little...
I think it makes a whole lot of sense. I will tell you that there is a fellow, Paul Backdain, who is a university professor, and he's much interested in cemeteries. He couldn't be here tonight, but he's younger than I am. And let's face it, I'm almost 87, you know? I might get hit by a bus one day.
I don't think so.
No, no.
But he's also interested and would have been here tonight, except that by the time...
He was working on that project on Tucker Road, you know, that family cemetery?
Yep. Yes, but that cemetery belongs to the Quakers, and I've been a needle in their side for a while.
Still needs some work.
It needs a great deal of work, and it's another one of those things. If you went in there just once a year and chopped everything down, it would keep the trees down. But the last person who really did the job was an Eagle Scout, who really cleared it all out, made it a big project, cleared it all out. But the Quakers didn't know they owned it.
Oh.
And now, I have been told at various times that the town cannot honor the fact that I chase down deeds. But I chased down the deed, and the man who owned that cemetery, who actually is buried there, gave it to Dartmouth meeting. And the Quakers do a very good job with all their other cemeteries in town. They just didn't know this one was theirs. But you know how they work. It has to go to weekly meeting, monthly meeting, quarterly meeting, yearly meeting. And I think by now, it should be through all those things.
Needs a lot of work.
It's going to be major work, and it's going to be difficult because there are trees. It's been more than 10 years, there are a lot of young trees in there. But once they get it clean, once a year, and go in and cut down everything there, it'll be fine.
And the neighbor next door, the butter, has authorized the use of his driveway? And if they need off-street parking?
Well, I will get back to them. I think the person who was pushing this at Smith Mills, I mean, Smith Deck, is probably as old as I am, so I need to get onto her, and maybe she's forgotten, you know?
All right.
Mr. McDonald?
Just one quick question. Is there anything in the plans to do anything with the cemetery on Old Fons Connor Road?
Not yet, but we can think about it. There are a lot of cemeteries in this town. And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts says that anyone can enter a cemetery for the purposes of restoration and cleaning, and it doesn't matter who owned it. At one point, I was told, oh, we can't do that because a legal taking costs money. But the Commonwealth now says you can go in and do that regardless of who owns it. And we've got a lot of cemeteries. I think I have 85 or so here. And I think I found a few, found a few more since then.
Well, that's good to know, a potential...
My black dog and I went off into the woods with men I'd never met before, but my black dog protected me, and the men were very honorable. But we went into the woods and passed some cemeteries in the woods that they'd known as kids. Kids knows where the cemeteries are.
Yes.
Unfortunately.
Well, older kids, kids not on screens.
Well, older kids, yes, absolutely.
Mr. Mickelson, that's a, as Mrs. Lund said, that previously had been an Eagle Scout project. So I know that you are friendly with scout groups. So if you could pose them with the potential of cemetery cleanup.
It might be an opportunity for somebody to do it again to help out.
One of the local troops, yeah.
Yeah.
For sure.
Great.
Yeah, cemeteries have a way of growing beer cans.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you for your duty, Judy.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have a Waterways Commission resignation. I just have to say that, that I'm glad Kevin Murphy stayed on to, to really push the peer project over the finish line and get it to the naming ceremony for Warren Hathaway. And so I think after having completed that task, now I can see that Kevin has decided that he's going to step away from the Waterways Commission. So we need to vote to honor his request.
Motion to accept and to forward a letter to Mr. Murphy thanking him for his service.
Second.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Mickelson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I wanted to bring up at this moment, because in the past, Mr. Tattelbaum, you've talked about Harbor Management Implementation Plan Group and the Waterways Commission, and a lot of overlap. So this might be a good time to meet with those two groups and see what their, you know, re-looking at what their charges are, and rather than folks that serve on two committees looking at one, it seems like there's an overlap of work.
I bet that's on the top of my list with Cody, and he's, he's on it, and we're going to try, we're going to move on then.
Okay. Before we appoint someone...
100% agree with you.
And, and there could be people already there.
Yep.
All right, next on our agenda, on our agenda. Okay. Page two. Status of the Classification and Compensation Study.
Yes, so we are remaining on schedule with that. All of the questionnaires for all of the employees have been submitted to the consultant that is conducting the study. That, you know, that you all saw what that questionnaire was. It was a somewhat laborious task, and so kudos to the, the staff for all getting that done. And really, kudos to the department heads and managers for reviewing all of those. And my, you know, I sampled some of them and reviewed, and so did Sue Cunningham, our HR Director. And it was impressive, the level of detail that's going into this. So I think we're going to get a very good, good end product here. While that's been going on, the, the list of comparable communities has also been somewhat finalized. And we have sent out, or not we, the consultant has sent out the, basically the salary survey and benefit survey to all of the comparable, potential comparable communities. So we will be compiling that. And like I said, we're moving right on time. This is a fast-tracked comp study. These usually take a year. So it's good to see that, you know, we're, we're several months in and we're still on time.
We spent, the, the quality of, of the comparable communities, you, are you...
Yeah, we've tried to, you know, one of the things with hiring the consultant is we want to stay, we want to provide our input when we find it's valuable. But we also don't want to change the results too much. So we've really been taking an approach of if they need things from us, we provide it. But we want this to be a very objective survey. And so we haven't been too much involved, other than small questions. But we're confident that the list that they have, you know, put together will be a good, a good list. There's no perfect comparable community out there. And I think what you see is some are smaller, some are bigger. Some have smaller budgets, some have bigger budgets, some have more road mileage, some have less. And then the idea is you take that average.
We have some very unique qualities that other towns don't even have, and everybody compare, you know?
Exactly, yeah.
Great, thank you.
All right, next.
Yes.
Town Administrator update.
So several things, we've had a very busy few weeks. Today, I held my first department head meeting, which went very well. I think I, I told the department heads I don't run a typical department head... I think I told the department heads I don't run a typical department head meeting. So we started off our Monday morning with a little bit of a competitive team-building exercise, where we built some spaghetti and marshmallow towers. And so that, you know, was a fun exercise, and our winning group got a small prize.
Interesting.
Yeah.
That may be how we build towers in the future, so maybe what we're limited to.
We also were notified by the City of New Bedford that New Bedford Regional Airport will begin having flights to Logan Airport two times a day, to and from Logan Airport two times a day, beginning September 29th year-round. So it really opens up a good opportunity for the South Coast region as a whole, so we want to promote that. One of the interesting things in reading about that was if you have a, if you have a flight out of Logan, you go through TSA and everything right at New Bedford. So you don't have to go back through security, your bags are already checked. So, you know, hopefully our residents can really tap into that resource, yeah. So that'll be starting September 29th. The RFP for the Cultural Center lease is now live. That's something you guys had previously approved. We have, several of our staff are at the Treasure Collector School this week up in Amherst. We actually have our Finance Director, Gary Carrero, who's teaching several of those classes up there. So kudos to Gary for, you know, serving in that role. I had sent the board out a draft of the DPW Efficiency Study Scope of Work. Once I have heard back from the board that they feel like it meets the individual membership's ideas, I'll send that over to the Board of Public Works, where they review and additions and approval. Capital planning, the memo has gone out to all departments. Our requests are due at the end of August, and then CIPC will begin meeting shortly thereafter. We have the CPC meeting tomorrow night, where they will be reviewing the proposed projects, which is just one for the Aiken House. We did post an agenda, so if a quorum of the board is present, that won't be an issue. And then the last item is, has to do with actually Judy and Sukadugi, the work they've been doing with the historical structure inventory. That project is beginning again. We did post information online regarding the vendor that's doing the work, but if you have a historical home in town, you may notice a vendor reaching out to you for information. They may be taking pictures, and that'll be an ongoing process over the next several months.
That's hysterical, non-hysterical.
It is, right, exactly.
Judy and Sue, you've got the right people on the job. All right, thank you. Proposed town projects with...
Yes, so one of the thoughts here was, I know the board was looking for regular updates on the town projects. I'd like to discuss, you know, what is a way that we can accomplish this, in, you know, whether it's through maybe the quarterly update. I think we can keep it in a live document, but it's difficult in speaking with department heads to have them go through and update this every two weeks, per se. So I'm just looking maybe for an idea of what the board thinks would be a helpful timeline. Obviously, making sure that, and I think if something big changes, that's on my job to make sure that you're aware of those things. But a regular update, quarterly, every two months, I mean, what do you think would be helpful? As great as every two weeks would be, it's hard to ask all of our department heads to go in and update this list before...
Considering we had never had a list, the first time we looked at it was the first time we looked at it.
But as needed, too, I think.
Yeah, as needed, absolutely.
Something might come up, we need to discuss it. We shouldn't have to wait, you know.
No, no, no.
A monthly or a quarterly or whatever.
No, I think a standing update is what I'm getting at. And of course, if things come up, you know, that's my job to make sure that you're aware of them, and if you need to make decisions. But I'm just looking for a timeline.
My opinion would be just once a month, I would say. Yeah, once a month for me would be fine if, unless something major came up, but, and if nothing's brewing, then nothing's brewing.
No change, yeah.
Exactly. Or at least it keeps us engaged.
Yeah, once a month sounds good.
I agree with that. I was going to say six weeks or so, but that's fine. I think quarterly kind of extends it out too long.
I'd propose one month.
Okay, we can certainly do that.
Okay. Anything on old business, 40B?
Yes, so like I had previously mentioned, the project on Old Westport Road and on Tucker Road are both, have been submitted for a comprehensive permit. The first public hearing is scheduled for August 27th. You know, we have a legal requirement to hold that first public hearing within 30 days of the receipt of both, of the applications. We have gone through and done a high-level preliminary review of these applications, not at a technical level, but rather just to make sure that they're complete. We have found significant deficiencies with both projects, and we have sent out letters to both of the submittals to letting them know there are several deficiencies and that they need to at least get those things submitted. But this public hearing is scheduled for the 27th. Our special counsel will be present at that meeting. We are anticipating quite a large turnout, so we will be in this room, and then we will also have a satellite room in room 309, the training room.
Excellent.
And that's the zoning board of appeals?
Yes, it is, yes.
And the time?
6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m., yes.
I think all of your butters were notified today.
Yes, the butter notifications went out last week, so they should be getting them within the next couple of days.
Yeah, some of them got them today.
And it was listed in the Dartmouth Week.
Yes.
All right, Bliss Connor?
No new updates.
Lake Donkachoke?
No new updates.
Municipal broadband?
No new updates.
All right. Then we have our minutes. So the minutes of July 14th and the minutes of July 28th, I will say I did review them and found no errors.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. All right. Select Board updates. Mr. O'Neill?
Mine are all in issues with executive session, so I'm good right now.
Okay. Mr. McDonald?
I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Mickelson?
I am good.
All right, and Mr.?
A few things.
Okay.
Firstly, I did meet, and I know, all of us meet from time to time with Cody. We met with a primary focus on preparation for our long-range planning workshops coming up in September. And there's a lot going on, and I, I'd like, Cody's, I said to him, "Is this important?" And he said to me, "Everything's important." And I think that evidenced by the kind of productivity and the comments we get from people, it's, I salute you, Cody, and keep it up. Long-range planning, I'd like to mention, and I'm going to say it at each meeting. The first meeting is on September 9 at the COA. I see my colleague Terry Ham's out there. If I get anything wrong, Terry, would you raise your hand for me? Thank you. September 9, COA, this is a, these are community projects. Will include the rec center, the COA projects, the Payton Arum Bridge, and maybe a couple other various ones. This is the first one. September 9 at the COA, 6 to 8 p.m. September 17 at the middle school, this will be a presentation by the school department headed by Mr. Kylie. September 17 at the middle school, 6 to 8 p.m. Lastly, September 25, DPW projects, and there are many, at the North Branch Library. September 25, 6 to 8 p.m. at the North Branch Library. They're going to build as we go along here, as you can see, they get bigger and bigger. But my, I salute my colleagues on our committee. We're really working hard to make it meaningful. We're going to go out of our way with Cody's help and with his staff to educate people as to when it's going to be, what we're going to do, signs, newspaper, social media, et cetera, do our very best to keep, get the word out. And I look forward to it, and I really appreciate all the work's been done by everybody. As I've said many times before, for instance, with the school department, we asked them to do things that really, they really weren't prepared to do yet, like, "What are we going to do about schools?" And looking at this over the course of the next 20 to 30 years, what are our needs going to be? And they did the, is this a fluid program, the fluid presentations? Oh, thank you. There it is. Am I right to coincide with those?
They do.
Thank you.
Yes, we asked DCTV to put those up when we were speaking tonight.
That could have been a very embarrassing moment for them.
Yes, yes, yes.
You got it right.
But you did, you did well.
Thank you.
You did well. Also, DCTV is going to have a press release that Kenzie Philibom is working on that'll include the QR code, so for folks to take the survey.
So thank you, and we'll do the best we can. As an addendum to that, last meeting, we approved the assemblage of the Budget Advisory Committee.
Yes.
Something that Gary Carrero has great experience with. In Westport, they like to talk about spending money, but then they have the problem of trying to spend it. But in our case, we're going to do the best we can with it. No offense in Westport. Yeah, that was awful. But Gary, so, and I, we're going to try to get that going soon. I did have a casual conversation with Mr. O'Neill. To me, for me personally, this is an adjunct committee to the long-range planning, and I'd like to serve, and Chris, speak for him, but he may volunteer to serve as well. And in terms of going forward, that committee, if you recall, was going to be two members from the Select Board.
Yes.
Two from Finance and two from...
School Committee.
Thank you. So if that, I don't, that's okay?
I think...
We'll have that on our future agenda. It's just something we have to have on our agenda.
Right, I just want to mention that, but...
Thank you.
It's a great leapfrog, and, you know, our commitment to the town meeting and to our parents in town, this is really critical, and I appreciate all the support. Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
You're welcome. All right, so my updates were to highlight what Mr. Tattelbaum just told us about the long-term ratings.
If you go over again, can't say it enough, right?
So, thank you. Also, we will have back-to-back meetings. So the next Select Board meeting will be next Monday, September 18th. Lots of work happening here in Dartmouth, we've got lots to do.
August 18th.[1763.96]